Call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Tuesday, March 17th, a little after 10 o'clock. We're going to move right into consent agenda. Melanie, please read the consent.
Approval of payroll, February 21st and March 6th, 2020. Approval of claims, February 20th and February 26th, March 4th, March 11th, 2020. Approval of minutes, February 11th and February 18th of 2020. Treasurer's monthly report filed February 29th of 2020.
And then artistic services agreement, Commissioner Blaney.
Adam Gusta, Chris Fadad, two agreements. Laura Gorski, Hannah Newman Jacobs, Derek DeRue, Madeline Woodruff Hadeen, Claire Hagan, Colleen Peluso, Angela Hyde, Valerie Webbell, Don Parker, Jared Coller, Jordan Romersberger. She has three agreements. And Molly Bass with two agreements for the Opera House.
Okay, so that is the consent agenda. I'll throw it to the floor. Motion to approve. We have motion of second for consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, sign, sign. Motion carries. As we all know, over the last several, three, four weeks, the country's been sort of paralyzed with the coronavirus. What we have asked today, we're going to be having our health, our local health professionals here from the Porter County Health Department, give us a corona preparedness presentation. And as we're waiting for Kurt to get everything up on the screen, I know this board over the last probably five days has been doing a lot of things behind the scenes, trying to keep government moving, keep the basic essential services of county government going forward here. We briefed all the different departments yesterday separately with each department head, and we've outlined our program. We, right now, from our county's perspective, I know the Health Department's going to be talking about things, but we're just talking about the day-to-day things here at the county. This isn't, this is the business acumen of it. You know, we're looking at an eight-week window here, and then we're reassessing every week as to what happens, because we really don't know where this thing is going to go. Some people think they do, some, I don't know, but we're sort of going into this with eyes wide open, and we're going to be looking at things every week based on new information and new data comes out. But right now, as you know, we've made our press release yesterday, and at noon today, this building will close, but the employees will still be reporting to work, and we've worked some things out with them to make sure that at-risk people or whatever aren't up here and aren't going to be coming to work. And we've got a mechanism right now that we're going to be able to help them, to pay them, to keep them coming to work, or even if they have to stay home and take care of somebody. So we think we've come up with a pretty good formula here, but that's as of today. And this thing could morph, and it could go in many different directions, and we're even planning for sort of our next couple moves that we would need to make if we have to make. So we've caught up to it from a county perspective in our enterprise, and we have some plans in place. And like I said, we're going to be monitoring it every week. And right now, it's almost every hour that something comes out. But I just thought that I wanted to make that statement. Laura, Jim, I didn't know if you wanted to add to that at all or anything, but it's been a lot of work. So, and I think we've caught up to it fairly, in a good fashion, and we just want to make sure that everybody that works for county government and is involved in county government has a clear roadway of what our expectations are and what we want to do. Our main goal is we want to keep our employees safe, but in the same breath, this government adds a lot of local money to the community. And we have to make sure that we're paying the bills and that we're doing things so commerce can continue to happen in this community, because there's a lot of businesses that are vendors of ours here, too. So we've tried to think of everything in and outside the box, but we're ready to pivot and turn if necessary. So I want to thank my fellow board members, Attorney McClure, Rhonda Young from HR, who has been a key piece of this as well, too. And I look forward to working with you folks in the future here, as we all have our fingers crossed and hope that this starts trajectory down before up, but we'll just have to wait and see what happens there. So any, I'll stop there. Sorry.
Yeah, I would like to thank our employees. We, as you said, went around and met with everybody, which took most of the day yesterday, but everybody was very willing to work with us and positive, and you know, it was mostly an "we're all in this together" feel, so I appreciate that.
We wanted to make the, whatever decision we ended up with was going to send a signal to the general public that we're ahead of the curve in here. And, you know, and it's in good hands, there's no need to worry. We believe everything's going to be fine as long as we keep a step ahead, and we fully intend to do that. There you go. So are you ready now, Kurt? Okay. Why don't you, yeah, come on up front here, Dr. Stamp, and if you want to make some introductions of the folks that you have here today.
I would like to.
Good morning.
Thank you, good morning.
Morning. Okay.
No introductions.
Part of the video, everyone.
I was trying to thread the needle there, Kurt, but it didn't work.
How about you reintroduce Dr. Stamp for one second?
And what we're doing here, why we're sort of back and forth with Kurt, we are videotaping. Now, we also videotape this from our, just for being a public meeting, but we also have a camera and everything where we're going to videotape this presentation, and then we're going to put it online anywhere we can to where the public can actually see this video and understand what's going on. So that's the purpose of why we're recording this in another way as well, too. So we want to make sure that it's a good presentation and we got it going. You ready, Kurt? Sorry for the fellow.
Take two.
Take two, right. So Dr. Stamp, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us here, Commissioners, this morning. Again, my name is Dr. Maria Stamp, I'm the Porter County Health Officer. I have a number of people from my office here with me today. And so we may have, depending on the questions that are being asked, we may have some others who might be able to ask questions, come up and do that. But I would really like to introduce to you today our Director of Emergency Preparedness for the Health Department, this is John Pisowitz. He has been with us since the end of last summer. John comes to us from, actually from working with Porter County's EMA under Lance Bella. He also is a medical transport nurse and has a lot of experience in nurse education at healthcare systems in the region. We have been really happy to have him with us, and this is exactly, these kind of situations are exactly the reason we have an emergency preparedness division in our Public Health Department. So with that, I'd like to hand this over to John, who will give our presentation, and then we will both be happy to answer any questions you have, because I'm sure there will be quite a few.
Welcome, John.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
All right. So first thing I want to start off with is the current, and this is as of this morning, current Indiana statistics. So right now, there are 30 positive cases in Indiana. Right now, we've had a total of two deaths, one which was down near the central part of the state, the other one that was in Johnson County. So right now, as of right now, there's been no deaths in the northern part of the state. 159 people have been tested by the state. As you can see on the illustration, we have two cases right now in Lake County. We have one Laporte County resident that is ill and hospitalized. We also have one that is in St. Joe County, and then one further out towards Noble County. Probably the biggest concentration is going to be Marion County, they have a total of nine cases there. Next slide. So some key points that I want to point out, basically, public health efforts at this time, we're basically focused concurrently on, obviously, working on containing the spread of the virus. So all these interventions that are being done, the social distancing, the closing of nonessential businesses and entities, that's all in an attempt to basically limit the virus. Right now, there is no vaccine or antibiotic, any kind of medication right now that has been approved to treat COVID-19. One of the things that they are, they are doing some investigations on some of the antivirals to help shorten the length of the virus, but those are all right now in development. So basically, these non-pharmaceutical interventions, these are actions that we're taking to basically limit the spread. As a virus, there's, with there's be no antibiotics available, basically, a virus just has to run its course. And so by limiting our contact with individuals is going to limit the spread. So basically, those social distancing and closing of businesses, limiting things down to, you know, the minimum will help. Next slide. All right. So just a few facts about COVID-19. Basically, it's spread person to person by respiratory droplets. So sneezes, coughs, things like that. If you're not covering your sneeze, your cough, you're not using the crook of your elbow, then those particles can end up on surfaces and live there for some time. Then you go ahead and you touch the surface, you touch your mouth, things like that, and then that's where people get sick. It is spread by close contact, so it's got to be generally within six feet for a prolonged period of time. Basically, the infection includes sputum, which is the kind of phlegm that you have in your throat, could be blood or those respiratory droplets that we talked about. Right now, the CDC is indicating that the current incubation time is, median average is about five days, but can be anywhere from two days to 14 days. It all depends on the individual's level of health. So if they have, if they're immunocompromised, if they have other medical conditions, and the ones that we're seeing is heart disease, lung disease, if they have cancer, diabetes, all of those predispose them to a greater chance of getting, contracting the disease quicker. One person can infect anywhere from two to three people, and mortality rate right now is what the reporting is, anywhere from 2 to 3.4%. So the mortality rate is very low, however, the, obviously, the infectious rate is very high. Next slide. So like I said, incubation period about five days, what symptoms are we basically looking at? Most people, anywhere from 83 to 98% typically have a fever, 46 to 82% have a cough, they may have the body aches or fatigue, that's anywhere from 11 to 44%, and then the shortness of breath, 31%. They also may be bringing up sputum, which is your phlegm. They may also have headache, they can also be coughing up blood or have diarrhea. And diarrhea and nausea seem to be presenting with the respiratory symptoms in the early stages. Next slide. So right now, to try to put your minds at ease a little bit, despite the gross numbers that are occurring throughout the world, 80% have mild cases. Right now, it is varying, you know, as far as illness and mortality. What we are seeing over in China was predominantly the very old. In Italy, we are seeing some younger cases, they're not quite sure of that, they don't know if maybe the virus mutated a little bit, but those are things that they're looking at. About day eight is really when the patient starts to have like the shortness of breath, the difficulty of work of breathing, and then by day nine is usually about the time that they get admitted to the hospital with some sort of pneumonia. The older patients obviously are going to be more at risk, your younger patients are going to be more at risk, just because their immune systems aren't as good. Next slide. All right. So of those that are actually hospitalized, 17 to 29% are developing ARDS, so that's an acute respiratory distress syndrome. So what is that? Basically, when a patient gets like a pneumonia or they become septic, they can go into ARDS. And ARDS is basically a condition where essentially down in your lungs, you have little grape-like sacs, and that's where you oxygenate your blood. Well, what happens is between that grape-like sac and the capillaries that run past that grate, which is the alveoli, essentially, fluid builds up in that area. So it's very hard for the oxygen to move across the membrane, and that's where we run into problems. It's very hard to, these are the people that have to go on ventilators. 23 to 32% require ICU-level support, so because of that need for mechanical ventilation on a, you know, on a ventilator. Some other things that we are seeing, secondary infection. So it, this virus works so that it compromises your immune system, and then if, there's other bacteria that might have been growing on your skin or other places that just hasn't manifested itself, then that infection, whether it's bacterial or fungal, takes over. We are seeing heart problems, we're seeing where the heart goes into arrhythmias, where it's an abnormal beating of the heart. They go into hypovolemic shock, where their blood pressure is very low, and as a result of that, that puts them into kidney failure. So you're seeing patients that are going on dialysis. Next slide, please. So like I said, 80%, majority of the patients are well. Biggest thing that the State Department of Health is recommending is that we give the patients that are being monitored masks from home with instructions, basically, that that latent period, anywhere from five to 14 days, they might start to see that onset of symptoms. And so at that point, that's where our epidemiology nurse is keeping in very close contact with these individuals to monitor, are you having fever? Are you having cough? Are you having diarrhea? Are you having nausea, vomiting? The hospital discharge, well, they'll discharge the patient, basically, they want to make sure that the patient's still maintaining good self-quarantine, hand hygiene, cough etiquette. Just because they get discharged from the hospital doesn't mean that the virus is completely gone. You still have what's called viral shed, and so they have to be cautious a few days after. And then to return to the hospital if the symptoms are getting worse. And then, of course, calling ahead to make sure that they, they're not walking into the emergency room or an urgent care center and contaminating that area. Next slide. So what is Porter County Health Department doing? Well, these are our objectives right now. Basically, it's public education. We are providing relevant, up-to-date information as it develops, basically, on our website. We're also fielding anywhere from 50 to 60 calls a day with concerned citizens on questions on what they have going on with them. We're also doing monitoring. So we're collaborating with CDC, the State Department of Health, and then Porter Regional to basically monitor these infected individuals, and if need be, get them to the hospital to get them admitted. We also perform epidemiological investigation. So those that do test positive, what we're doing is we're trying to identify why, you know, why, how did they come into contact with this organism? Who lives in their house? How much close contact have they had? Where have they traveled? You know, what means of travel do they use? So we can start identifying and notifying the various entities. And then obviously, we're doing a consulting role. So we're doing, working with long-term care facilities, giving them the guidance that we receive from State Department of Health, CDC, we're working with prisons and juvenile centers, fire police and EMS, and then the Small Business Association. Next slide. So as far as public health, I pulled this off on Sunday. So as you see on our website, we do have information and resources from the CDC, we do have information about the social distancing practices, and then the current patient that's from Laporte County, our press release is listed there under County Reported Cases. Although they are hospitalized at Porter Regional, this patient is a Laporte County resident. Next slide. As far as monitoring is concerned, right now, since the beginning of this outbreak, we've been monitoring 19 individuals so far to date. Currently, right now, Jessica, who's our epidemiology nurse, she's been monitoring 12 individuals right now who do have the signs and symptoms. Four have been tested, two have turned out to be negative, and two are still pending. We do have one of those that have been tested that is immunocompromised, so obviously, we're watching that individual very closely. And then obviously, with the numbers that have been coming in, the state can't monitor everybody now. So they've tasked our county to basically, you watch yourself, and we're going to basically just keep an eye on those that are only positive cases. So Jessica's been doing a great job with that. Next slide, please. So what are some things that she does? So when she gets in contact with these people, she's trying to find out if they're a person under investigation, where have they traveled? You know, what contacts have they had, both before, during, and after symptoms? You know, have, do they have individuals in the household that they need to be concerned about? You know, young and old? Have they sought out medical care? And if so, what pre-existing conditions might they have that would basically make them a candidate for getting this organism much quicker? And then obviously, the, what signs and symptoms do they have, and when did it all start? Next slide, please. So this is a timeline as far as our consulting and what the Health Department's been doing. So starting on March 2nd, when things started really ramping up, we met with the Porter County, the County Council, and gave them updates, kind of answered what questions they had in regards to what was going on, and kind of what our plan was going forward. On March 12th, I met, or actually, I sent out guidance to our sheriff regarding the newest updates for the prison and juvenile centers, so he can basically maintain that social isolation of his inmates. On the 13th, Dr. Stamp, Lys Peta, our health administrator, Connie Rudd, who's our Director of Nursing, and then Jessica, all met with Porter County School Superintendent to kind of give their recommendations as far as what should, what should be occurring within the school system. This Sunday, I actually was on a conference call. District One Incident Management Team is talking about activating an ESF-8, which is public health, Emergency Operations Center at the Gary Regional Airport. With, as we are a partner of that, that District One team, some of the things that we are hearing is basically, no one's coming to help us as far as resources. So we're not going to get help from Chicago, we're not going to get help from Indianapolis, everyone has their own things going on. So we have to work together as a district to basically make sure that we have, we're utilizing our resources the best we can. And the best way to do that is stand up a, an Emergency Operations Center, so that we're making sure that everyone in the district is taken care of. Next slide. On the 16th, we met with fire police and EMS, consulted with them to basically give them the newest updates as far as what is going on with EMS and dispatch instructions. We've kind of worked out a plan as far as those patients that actually present to via 911 and how they're going to handle those cases. At that time, they did let us know of their critical need for personal protective equipment. As a result of that meeting, we sent guidance down to the state that we are in need of PPE. Of course, today, we're here meeting with you, tomorrow, I'll be attending the District One Healthcare Coalition meeting. We were going to probably stand up that EOC here in the very near future. We're also reaching out at that, at that meeting to our long-term care health partners, hospice and home care partners, so they know what to do as well. Next slide, please. So we'll have that meeting in the afternoon tomorrow, and then come April 8th, we will be doing a pod exercise. Now, this was a previously scheduled exercise. Despite things that are going on, we are still going to proceed as scheduled. The whole idea behind a pod is in the event that if, this was an organism that could be taken care of with a immunization or antibiotics, the whole goal is, is the Health Department would stand up with the assistance of the EMA, and we would go ahead and distribute those medications to all of Porter County. Next slide. All right. So right now, as far as testing is concerned, that becomes the big question right now. So we are working collaboratively with all of our District One Healthcare Coalition Partners. Since we are a vested partner, we are working with them, and of course, the State Department of Health. Multiple requests have been made for specimen collection kits, or I should say, supplies, I won't call them kits, and as well as all of District One Partners have made similar requests. As you can see and read, no supplies have been sent by the Indiana State Department of Health as of today. They've acknowledged the request, nothing has been sent. We have reached out because of that, that situation, we've reached out to private lab corporations to ascertain whether or not we can obtain supplies, so that we may possibly start drive-through testing. And what we're waiting on right now is pricing from our vendors to see whether or not this is going to be something that will be feasible. My understanding is the supplies are not that expensive, but the testing of the specimen is. Next slide. So on, yesterday at 2:50 PM, I sent a emergency email to Megan Little, who's the Director of Emergency Preparedness at the Indiana State Department of Health, notifying her that right now, all Porter County Fire Departments, Police Departments, EMS, and Health Department have less than $96 hours of personal protective equipment. After meeting with the Fire Chiefs Association, Porter Regional EMS, they're in need of severity of gloves, that is most needed, in addition to masks. We did update our status in EM Resources, which is a state, a website that's monitored by the state. I was acknowledged by the state that they forwarded on a request to their logistics section, and I think, my understanding is, is all of this is being cavulated so that the strategic national stockpile can be released. Next slide. All right. So what are some things that the public can do? Actually, let me, just one point on that, the previous slide. So I've been working with, very closely with Director Bella from the EMA. So we sent out the request for resources. Director Bella has sent out basically, supply requests from each department head, what they're in need of, how much gloves they need, how many masks they need, how many gowns they need, those, those different things. So when we do receive the requests, and we do receive possibly the strategic national stockpile, then we already are in supply of that information, and we can start notifying those department heads, please come up and pick up your PPE, so that your individual can be protected. So most important thing, what can the public do? Well, right now, they can basically stay home unless they're seeking out medical care. You can separate yourself from other people and animals. You can go ahead before going to your physician, your urgent care, your hospitals. Wear a face mask if you have one. Cover your cough and your sneezes. Wash your hands often, that's probably the biggest thing that you can do right now. Avoid sharing personal items like toothbrushes and, you know, combs and things like that in your household. And then clean any high-touch areas. I know the Facilities Director passed out various disinfectants to all the different departments, which is a great measure, so we applaud them for that. And then obviously, monitoring all your symptoms and reporting, reporting in. Next slide. So this time, we'd like to take any questions that you may have.
You said there was two guests in the state of Indiana.
Correct.
Do you know the ages of those two individuals?
I think the... Another one in Johnson County was reported as being over 60, and the one in Marion County, I am not certain, I don't know the details, also over 60. Jessica knows.
And do you have any information on, on test costs?
We're looking into that right now. We've reached out to three different vendors to try to see if we can, you know, obviously get the best price.
Are we set up to do the drive-through testing if we are able to acquire tests?
So, we've been talking about this this morning. If I can give, if it's okay for me to give details, we've spoken with LabCorp and Quest, and they are the ones that are available for us to get set up with online right away. The Quest for LabCorp, or I'm sorry, the, the supplies from LabCorp, I should say, the tests from LabCorp are the most cost-effective. Supplies for collection of samples are, they just, they give those to you, but then, but then they charge, I believe it's just under $52 per test. We understand that Medicare is covering, there is a CPT code, which is a national code that allows for billing of specific tests. So there is a CPT code that is used for this specific... So there is a CPT code that is used for this specific COVID-19 test, and that as we know, as far as we know now, Medicare will cover that. We don't know about other insurances. So we are looking to potentially, they are willing to get us set up with a small number, about five specimen collection sets, and then as we use those, they can get us more. How best to use those, we're still considering. It would be wonderful if we could test everybody in the county with a fever and a cough, but we're just not at that point right now. So we need to test those who are at highest risk, who are taking care of people at highest risk, and those are our biggest priority right now. The hospital is testing according to the state guidelines. They have mostly, with their tests, used the Indiana State Department of Health. So the State Department of Health is getting some testing supplies to the hospital, but they are also utilizing a commercial lab in addition. The turnaround time is a little bit greater, longer with the commercial labs. So LabCorp and Quest, as we were told, it's about a four-day turnaround time. The State Department of Health is a 48 to 72-hour turnaround time, so a little faster. We would, you know, be happy to investigate other options as they become available. The people that, we are thinking we would have priority in testing because the hospital is testing those who come in who are gravely ill, those who need to be admitted are being able to be tested. So we would, like, those patients that are clients that we are monitoring, so who have come from Level 3 countries, we are still monitoring those patients for two weeks. And we, if they get mildly ill, we might not, as things currently stand, be able to test them. We might just have to say, you're sick, stay home. If you're not so sick that you have to go to the hospital, you might have coronavirus. And we kind of keep up with them daily to make sure that they aren't getting worse or need to seek medical care outside the home or outside of what we can do for them with medical advice from the health department. We would love to be able to test those people as a priority, those people that have traveled overseas recently or are living in a house with someone who's traveled overseas recently and is sick. Drive-through testing is an option. We are considering ways to do that. There are concerns, though. For instance, there needs to be enough airflow. We were thinking about our own county's garage, which is, we're concerned that the turn, being able to drive through and turn around and go out, I think the county's garage is not logistically a great place for that. And also, you get exhaust buildup of people potentially waiting for testing, and the airflow is not ideal. So we were thinking of some other options, and we're currently working that out. We need to speak with, of course, some governmental agencies to be able to get permission to use places, yes.
The garage is used for the emissions testing sites. The one in Valparaiso, they have garage doors on both ends of it, and they can open them and close them at will. Those, actually, that would be a perfect.
That's actually a great suggestion that we hadn't thought about. That has really good airflow, and they are used to dealing with exhaust kind of issues on a regular basis. We will look into that. That's a really good idea. It's nice to be able to have something covered so that if we are able to test on a day where the weather isn't ideal, at least we're not being rained on during the testing. We need to work out kind of protocol to make sure that our health department employees are not exposed or, you know, unduly exposed. We do have some PPE that is, you know, we can use for this, for testing, but we need to update our education of whoever is going to be the one that is going to be doing the testing. We'd like to minimize, like, keep it down to one or two nurses at the most, who are actually exposing themselves.
Dr. Stamp, is there any concern? Because, I mean, first of all, I think we, unless people aren't clear, we would be acting as a collection site, not as a testing site.
That is correct.
So whatever specimens are collected at whatever location, those specimens are then mailed out because the two labs that you're talking about, they don't have a lab here in northwest Indiana. They have to be sent out of state.
Correct.
So the concern is, is putting, how do you deal with that if it's running through the mail? I mean...
It actually, with these labs, they have, they are using courier for this specifically. So I don't believe that it's actually going through the mail. I don't know what happens when it's picked up by the courier. That's a good question. But then the lab takes their kind of responsibility for that.
I didn't mean to say, I didn't mean to say the mail.
Well, sometimes we do send things through the mail. That's a reasonable thing to say.
Yeah, it's couriered offsite, yeah.
Correct. And then we are handling these specimens or intend to handle these specimens just like we would any other infectious specimen in the plastic bio bags, and, you know, keep, take those precautions as we would with any other kind of contagious specimen.
As these test kits start becoming available, are you thinking that the hospitals here will be the ones that would be setting up these drive-through things too? Because this is, to a certain extent, covered under people's health insurance, right? And that's who our provider is in this country. And I just didn't know if you had been talking to the hospitals in Porter County to make sure that when this does happen, we're sort of preparing for, they are preparing for these drive-through type situations.
Absolutely. That's a really good, that's a really good question. I believe all the hospitals in the district, at least all the major healthcare systems, are setting up to be able to do outside drive-through testing when testing is available. I know, we're really happy about that.
Do they have any idea when they're looking at more testing becoming available?
Right. They, it might be a week or two. They are still, they are still looking out into at least next week for this, but they are, they are preparing. They have their little clinical tent, and they are, they are working on the logistics and protocols for how to do this and increase the testing for the community.
So in the meantime, before we have the test, how are we figuring out who to monitor? It's really hard to manage it when we don't know for sure.
Exactly. So we field phone calls from, from people who have come back from traveling abroad because that was just this past week, that people from Europe have been rushing to come home.
So they're calling you?
And we have, so we have added, the slide said Jessica had been monitoring 12 individuals with travel, potential travel-related exposures. We're actually up to 18 or 19 now. So that is one of the ways we're finding out. And then we are also kind of working with the hospital. We're in close contact with the infection control directors at the hospital to kind of know where people are in the system in terms of if they have COVID-19, where they are in the hospital, where they are at home, and then we can kind of monitor those people. And if we can, kind of do some epidemiological work to figure out where exposures might have been in the community and really contain it as best we can. The idea with, this is, we would love to keep it out of our county. That is really not feasible in this current situation. So the idea is to minimize the exposures and slow the spread of the virus so that we have ICU beds available for those people who need it when the time comes. So that's really been our focus, and the whole point of keeping people home is to minimize their exposure and slow down the spread of the virus.
Of course, one of the arguments I keep hearing is, well, there's no cases in Porter County, so why do we have to stay home? But there's only been four people tested.
There have been more than four people tested.
Oh, I saw that.
Right. So there, as far as we know, there are probably six or eight at least. Our numbers are still small. Some of those tests have not returned back yet, and people are likely have this and don't know it.
Would it be fair to say, it's not a, this is, it's not a case, so much a case is, if we're going to get it, it's going to be when we're going to get it? Because we're going to get it.
When, and when we're going to see spikes in cases. Right, right.
That's what I'm hoping. But as the commissioners pointed out earlier in our, our presentation on this was, and it certainly sounds, this is exactly what you, your department has done, is we're preparing for the inevitable. And it certainly sounds like you guys have done a good job with that.
Thank you. We're working on it.
Well, the one thing, to keep the curve flattened, as we've been talking about, I didn't see, but I've been reading, and I know this whole thing keeps evolving, and you couldn't redo your slideshow 200 times, but I'm seeing that younger people are not really, they're asymptomatic a lot of times, but they're carrying. And I've seen a lot of younger people out and about, a lot of parents are not seeing the risk to the older population. And then when you look at the mortality rate by age, it just really spikes up after 60 and 70 and 80. And I hope people out there that are watching this understand that their kids do need to stay home for the whole community.
Yes, the very young and the very old, because as we pointed out earlier, those are typically your demographics that don't have a good immune system. So obviously, as you see that spike up in age 60, you know, these are where all your medical conditions really start showing up over years of a lifetime. You know, the heart disease, the pulmonary disease, the diabetes, cancers.
We are seeing, you know, you'll see the young people, they'll hear about potential closures, oh my goodness, this is the last time I can go out to eat, my goodness, this is the last time I can go to the movies, and they are, they are trying to take advantage of all those things that, and it's hard to see, especially when you're young, it's hard to see that the future will go back to normal. These things will open up again, it will happen. These are, these may, these measures may last for a while, but life will, life will go on when this is done, and it's hard to get young people to see that. So yes, I would encourage our teenagers and young people who are out of school right now, especially to lay low, stay home. Avoid, avoid large gatherings, certainly, really avoid gathering in more than groups of, I would even say, three to five.
Common sense decisions.
And then one last thing I saw that was different on your, what the public can do, than, it was just a little different than some of the things I've been reading. It recommended wearing face masks, but I've been kind of reading the opposite.
Well, that was guidance that came from the State Department of Health, so I would just follow, you know, we're just providing whatever guidance that they are putting out, whether it's the State Department of Health or the CDC, that came straight from their slide deck.
So face masks for anybody who's ill that has to go out for some reason, seek medical care, that kind of thing, to wear, do not wear, we recommend not wearing face masks if you're well. Because they don't really protect you that much, and it causes confusion as to who's really to take a wide girth, stay away from. If someone has coronavirus and is isolated in their house, if they live with other people and have to be in the same room as them, that is an exposure to the people they live with, and a face mask is beneficial for the person who is ill to prevent spread to their family members or the people they live with who are well. Really, the ideal thing is to be by yourself in a room with your own bathroom as, you know, when that's possible.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then the one other thing I noticed was animals.
So, yeah, so we all kind of laugh about that, you know, hugging your dog or whatever is going to get you coronavirus. But we have to remember that this COVID-19 came from an animal vector. So they're thinking it came from, oh, I can't even pronounce the name of the animal, but through bats. They think that's where the reservoir is, and then came from a wild animal at a wet market in China. So we don't know really what the potential is for spread to and from animals. It was recommended on the CDC website that if you are diagnosed with coronavirus, not to be hugging and loving and cuddling on your animals. And even though we don't think that dogs and cats are particularly susceptible, we have not seen cases of that in the United States, and really, they have not reported that worldwide, it is always, if you are, if you are playing with your pets and whatever, it's always wise because they do carry bacteria and other infectious agents. So wash your hands after you are handling animals, any animals.
I don't think my dog's going to understand the social distancing.
I know.
I was thinking more of your cat. No, the cat don't care.
The dog is quarantine.
I was thinking you snuggle.
Well, that's all the questions I had.
Yeah. Well, it's got to be a challenging time, especially, you know, you also have to look at all the HIPAA rules and the HIPAA laws, and this type of situation sort of is counterintuitive to that. And I know you guys are walking quite a tightrope when it comes to those type of things, and forever be diligent, I guess.
Absolutely.
One of the questions that I'd like to circle back to, and it is part of EMA and Lance, you know, I was talking to Lance on the phone yesterday, and you talked about the EOC up at Gary.
Yes.
And Lance had said that at some point in time, we may have to circle back and look at Porter County and setting up an EOC for our EMA department.
Sure.
If we so choose to do. And I just wanted to let that, I didn't tell anybody the conversation I have. Lance, do you want to just come up here briefly and just talk about that, just briefly? Not trying to take over the presentation, but I thought that was an interesting thought or whatever. So, good morning, Lance.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good. So as we see a need, and we're going to have a meeting later at EMA to discuss this, what nutritional value would we bring to the situation by gathering information, which as John said, we're getting requests from the fire departments, police, what do they need? And so we're gathering that, compiling that, but trying to organize that, track that, and then also track. We have two of our EMA personnel that are dedicated to the district EOC, so we're trying to augment and help them. Deputy Director Carla was there Sunday and then last night, trying to help them set some things up. He's not going to be dedicated there, but we have two people dedicated there. And then we have one of our section leaders coming in today, and he's going to be installing and setting up some equipment so that we can stand that EOC up at any point in time if we need to. And during that time, we'll be discussing what information what we want to have, what do we want to see, and then we would even invite, if need, or if it benefits them, the health department and any other departments within our government, to be able to be there or have a representative there, and that way they can obtain information. So what we're trying to do is just be able to supply and coordinate as we do, but to supplement and assist and enhance the effectiveness of the health department for what they're doing. That way, if we can make their jobs easier with some of this, we're going to try to do that because they've got enough going on on the other end, so.
Yep. Thank you, Lance. And then the other thing I'd like to point out is, you know, our EMA, we, Porter County has its own EMA department, but we are part of a district which includes northwest Indiana. So we work as a group collectively for the region, but we also can pull back and work locally. locally here. And the other, and I know this is a department over the last three years since we've hired Lance, that has made a lot of robust progress. And, thank you. But with that, I'd also like to say that a lot of part of EMA in Porter County is volunteers. And we have some people here that are volunteering their time to help come and do this. And, you know, that's public service. And I just wanted to be able to say that, because I know, you know, you've put a pretty good volunteer corps together, and these guys put a lot of hours in. And they're not paid for it, and we try to give them as much gratitude up here as possible, but it never seems like enough. So, I just wanted to take some time to just point that out to the folks in here, that we have a very robust EMA department. And I think you've seen just by the presenter and with Lance, that we got it hitting on all cylinders there, but we have a lot more work to do. And I appreciate your diligence on behalf of the county.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? I don't mind opening up to the public, I really don't. This is a special time, and if anybody has concerns, this is the time where you can come up and address. Alls I'd ask is if you come up, there's a microphone up in the ceiling there, we just want to be able to hear you. And if not, that's fine too, but.
Fortunately, we don't have too many public here. They listen.
Yeah. So, I don't see any takers at this time, so, final thoughts and comments?
I would like to reiterate how kind of, we didn't touch on it very much about the potentially activating the Division One ESF-8, which is specifically healthcare and public health. We are excited about that. Information sharing has been a little bit challenging in the past couple of weeks. I find that I'm getting my information about the rest of the counties and the district from the newspaper. So, when we can kind of have people in one location, come together and share information and the status of, the status of the spread of the illness and the status of the needs of the healthcare facilities and the county, or in the district, and what other public health agencies are doing, maybe sharing best practices for how to go about things like testing, reporting, and monitoring, all those things. And getting a, and getting a really consistent message out to the public on what's going on. I think this, standing up this District One ESF-8 will be really helpful along those lines. So, we're looking forward to that in the next, what, week or two, I think? They were hoping to do that, so.
Good. And all of this will be online, so anyone who's interested in revisiting, they can visit on the Health Department's website? Is that where it is?
Where are we putting it Kurt?
Just go to the porterco.org, and you'll see it flashing at the top of the page.
We even flash it now, just so you can find it easy, so. And I think, how many hits on that part of our website? Now, our new website allows us to look at how many people go to website and how many of this.
This morning, just on the coronavirus section on the website, we've had over 17,000 hits. Yesterday morning, at the same time, we had 12,000 hits.
Yeah.
People want to know.
They want to know.
We just want to direct people to that website. There's a lot of good information on there, and I think you'll find the new website is very easy to navigate through. That's what we've done, but now we have metrics too that we can look at, so we're always into numbers. But that's where this, this presentation will be when, soon as we get it posted up for the public.
Is there information there regarding if somebody thinks they have it? And they're getting ill, who do they call?
You need to revisit that, and you can come work with Dr. Stamp in health. He'll have better information on that page as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that, I think, wraps it up. So, thank you again for coming today. I know you folks have been overwhelmed and very busy.
Doing a great job.
But thank you for taking the time and coming and putting this on video so we can get it out to the public. So, thank you.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we're going to do right now is, we're going to take a five-minute break for restroom or whatever, and then I think the people that.
Hand washing.
Hand washing. And I think anybody that wants to sort of move on out of here, this is the opportunity. So, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been way more mobile than you're supposed to be.
I know. I went just before we got in.
The kids doing, doing masks yet?
Yeah, I know. I'm finding that too.
And extroverts at home who are, like, they've been cooped up for 24 hours.
They've got to be by themselves alone.
How old are they?
Eighteen tomorrow, so she's got a birthday she wants to celebrate and stuff.
Sure.
I really, I can't have you have ten people over here for lunch today. So, she was very understanding on canceling her.
They're to lunch.
She's going to have to, yeah. So, I'm really thankful that the schools, like, with their, with their e-learning, they're doing some virtual conferencing, so that, like, my elementary school child, she can see her classmate, and, like, she feels, like, sort of in touch there, so that helps. It is a really big deal. So, yeah, I have two extroverts who are like, get me out of here, I need my friends. And I have two introverts who are like, I'm going to be in my bedroom.
Yeah.
Hanging out, yeah.
They're so lucky to have siblings.
That could be.
Right, all by yourself, that's a, that's a hard thing.
If you need some, some help of contacting somebody or at the admissions testing site, see if that can be available.
Okay. Okay, I'll do that. I'll, I'll put one of the, one of our nurses on that, maybe Letty. Actually, that might be a good thing for Letty to work on, if we can do that. And whenever you have more information about what's going on at Great Lakes in terms of testing, we'll take that information too and add it into our mix, because we can get a better turnaround time. Boy, that'd be a big deal.
I asked them yesterday, I said, what's the turnaround time of the test? They said 24 hours. And she said that, you know, we got an email from our insurance provider yesterday saying that Franciscan School is going to be doing the COVID test.
I heard that rumor too, but I couldn't find.
The turnaround time was like a week. But I called that number.
So, like Alverno?
Yeah. I called that number, that's, and I got it, I got it, that's recorded. So, I don't, and there was no, and there was, I mean, we don't have any information on, well, if I schedule today, when can I get in there to do that? Where is it going to be done? I don't have any information, just a cost.
Interesting. Good, thank you. All of those helpful. They're a lot.
Oh, we'll be fine.
Multiple, multiple different directions.
I just, just want to stay ahead of it in the, in the event, just say this thing would mutate or something.
I'm so thankful.
Like, I want to be the first one to say that.
Yeah. Give it a week, we'll have a case. One week.
A doubt.
No, not a doubt, a week. Positive. But like you said there, we've already tested, what, two, four? I've got two brothers that, and they're not, you know, they're cops. They swear they had it. I mean, they were like, for two weeks, they were like.
They were down for the count.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Certainly could be. Like, I think you said before, we are, we are transit county.
Total road 894 and that train.
I think we should send everybody to pop up.
Yeah.
And the Speedway.
Yeah.
And the Speedway.
Speedway.
Everyone that all needs a testing. ACL.
Playing sports or just?
Skiing.
Ah.
Yes, I can at least say it was not like walking.
Getting out of the recliner.
Or something, like, getting out of the recliner. I was doing something fun.
That's why I've never skied before. Always scared me about them, my knees. I'm like, I made.
No, I played basketball and baseball, but.
Basketball's a, basketball's a high-risk one too, so. Yeah, no, it, it was the first day of our vacation. It was the end of the day, I got one good day of skiing in, and the rest.
Oh, the first day, oh.
Then everybody else was skiing, and I was out of contact. Exactly right. Exactly right. By the end of the week, you know, they got me this thing at the ER, because they know ACL tears there. So, they get me this huge exoskeleton, and by the end of the week, I was like, walking up and down the street. It didn't hurt that badly.
You're going to need surgery?
I had surgery three times.
Oh, you had some?
Yeah. This was New Year's Eve that I had the injury, and then I waited two months, got, you know, tried to get stronger before the surgery, and then had a surgery two and a half weeks. So, I'm okay. Really, it's not fun.
Oh, yeah. I've, I've, I've.
Happily, had the surgery, it's not fun.
It takes a long time to get over that.
Yeah. Yeah, months.
Yes.
We're ready to, it's okay. I can ski next, I can ski next winter. That's the, that's the thing.
With a brace?
With a brace.
With a brace.
And then, no, I am going to have the strongest quad.
We're getting dreamed of it. Might actually, it's prime, didn't even compute.
I think IT is.
IT, okay. So, should I do the little, uh?
Ask IT if you need to do anything to make sure of that.
All right, and then I'll put the sign. Yeah. Thank you.
Oh. You're not being wandering around?
Forgot we had an entire meeting. You have to go.
Yes, we do.
Half the meeting.
No, we, no, we want Scott. Scott is coming.
Or Doug will be writing this time next week. Oh, there you go.
You want to talk to him?
Drag it out.
That was my joke.
We got something on you.
All right. So, let's reconvene the meeting here. We're going to go right into commissioners' business. We have an ordinance establishing a non-reverting fund for the Porter County, Porter County Circuit Court Adult Guardianship Grant Program. If you recall our last meeting, we approved this on first reading. This is second reading. Throw it to the floor.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we, can this just be, this doesn't have a first or second reading. This is a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners concerning the assignment of Porter County tax sale certificates to the city of Alperazo in the town of Porter. Any questions or comments or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have, this is for NIPSCO. This is an agreement for extension of facilities to provide electric service to 157 Franklin Street. This is just to get this switched over to permanent power.
Think we're going to need that. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. Yeah. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to get into some housekeeping and approving of pay applications for the North County Annex. The project's coming along, it's coming along in a good way. We're sort of at the point now in the project where we're doing a room and moving a room, so we're now into the laborious task of fixing an area, moving people into it, and then fixing another area. So, it's coming along though. First one we have is State Line Fire Systems. This is an allowance authorization in the amount of $2,364 to revote the fire department connection to the front of the Annex building per the Fire Chief of Portage. And this is an allowance authorization, basically saying there's money in the budget, we just have to approve it to get to it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have items number two through 10 on the agenda. These are all pay applications, and we're going to vote on them all at one time.
Thank you.
So, if anybody has, we'll go ahead and get it moving here. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of the things? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to go into 157 Franklin, and that building too is rapidly approaching completion. Still have a lot of things that we're working through there that you'll be seeing about in the upcoming meetings, but we're, we're getting close. Number one is an allowance authorization for Pangier, an amount of $8,569. This is to repair broken glass in the existing windows, category five test on elevators, additional hardware, and seven-foot tall generator fence.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. We, here we have a change order, and this is for Midwest Tile and Interiors, and this is a credit in the amount of $35,300, as we deleted some rubber stair treads and risers and landings.
I like this kind of tree.
Yeah. And if you recall in the building, the stair towers are in pretty good shape. When they spec this out, they, they put some things in there that we just don't feel we're going to need, so we're going to take the money back.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. So, now, items three through nine, again, are just regular pay applications per contracts. It's already been approved. So, we can do them all in once.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Juvenile Detention Center. Now, this is a reading, first reading. We have an ordinance creating a non-reverting fund for the receipt of fees associated with the Porter County Truancy Court. So, what we're going to do is close, we're going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing. We're going to go three for, three against. Anybody wishing to stand up and speak against, against this ordinance, please come forward. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance. First call, anybody wishing to come and speak in favor of this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come and speak in favor of this ordinance. Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance, and we'll close the public hearing, open it up, and I'll throw it to the floor. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
On first reading, right?
On first reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. This, the second hearing, second reading will be heard at our next commissioners' meeting. Next up, we have Sheriff Reynolds here. First up, Harley Davidson of Alperazo motorcycle lease for one year in the amount of $2,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. We have a memorandum of understanding between Porter County Substance Abuse Council and the Porter County Sheriff's Office for the Porter County Community Harm Reduction Initiative.
Motion to approve.
Um, North Shore Health Centers, uh, in agreement to provide substance abuse treatment at the Porter County Jail in the amount of $106,000 for one year. I'd like to, before we make a motion on this, on the Harley Davidson of Alpo, um, we've already approved, but it, I'm, I'm assuming that this is coming out of one of the sheriff's funds?
It is.
Okay, I just wanna make, uh, uh?
It's coming out of the sheriff.
Make an amendment, just to make sure that we're not approving it for us spending the money. I just wanted to make sure that we, when this goes to the council, that they're aware of that. Um, North Shore Health Centers, same thing here. Um, I'm certain that that's being paid for, Scott, out of a different fund, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we know what we're?
They've identified the budget in line item.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, this is for EMA. We have a Porter County Disaster Emergency Declaration and Travel Restrictions. I think we all know what those are and why.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
Should we point out, given that we're dealing with the coronavirus too, this goes back to the lakefront, this is not?
Right.
Some new thing we're playing for the coronavirus.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is just, you know, we have to declare, we can only declare an emergency every 30 days, and so this, our last meeting, we did it forward for this meeting, and this goes to the next meeting, so.
Anyone who's watching online.
Yeah, just so they know, I, yes, I, you're right, Laurie, that could've been, I think I was going down that rabbit hole, so.
All right.
Next up, Enterprise Fleet Management. This is a lease quote rate for a 2020 Chevy Silverado in the amount of $7,1297 a month, and this is for the EMA Department. Uh, just for the record, uh, we have been slowly changing out vehicles in that apartment, but that department, all their vehicles were well over 200,000 miles. Um, so, um, this is just?
This is, this is the second time we've approved it. The first time?
Right.
Didn't have a few of the bed liners and things on it, so this price is slightly higher just because the, um, some of the lighting package and the, uh, bed liner got put into the price.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up, this is for 911. Um, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Port County Remote Dispatch Center and Porter County Remote Dispatch Center. Does anybody know what this is for?
This is about us being backup to each other.
I gotcha.
And that's actually very good right now with the coronavirus.
Yeah.
And this, and this takes us out for another 10 years, so.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve.
Finally got that in writing, right? I mean, we always talked about they're a backup, but we've never really formalized it, so that's good. Sorry.
That's all right. We got a motion and a second?
Uh, we have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution for the disposition of property. I'm gonna turn this over to Attorney McClure.
Well, because we're government and we, when we go to get rid of things, sometimes we have to go an extra step, and we have basically used outdated CPR equipment at 911 that we used to use for CPR training. Includes 10 adult CPR mannequins, 10 adult CPR training heads, one basic mannequin. All of these, all of this equipment falls outside of the current guidelines for training, so this resolution would allow us to either give it away or dispose of it.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance. Uh, Scott, would you wanna explain this one too here, what we're doing?
Yeah, this has been in the makings for quite a long time, and this has been vetted out by our 911, uh, leadership, and then also, um, all of the agencies in effect, including E, and EMA, City of Alpharezo, Fire and Police, Portage Fire and Police, uh, dealing also with the rest of the, uh, the volunteer fire departments. This is a remaking of the, uh, it's, it's basically taking, we had a policy board, we had the E91 Policy Board, and we had an Advisory Board, um, and just by the slightly different names, you can understand why it was a little bit confusing. This gets rid of, of those two boards and brings it down to the new creation of the E91 Advisory Board and redoes the, um, the board membership to 11 members, um, on that board to include, um, county and city designees. This is to get that board kind of re-equipped and with a little bit, uh, different direction as far as, uh, the, the duties of this advisory board. So this is a cleanup of that, and this has been in the making probably for about a year and a half.
Any questions, Tim, or anybody?
No, it was, uh, it was a good project. It needed to be done, brought up to date, um, made more relevant. Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, next up? Oh, there it is, on the bottom, I'm sorry. Memorial Opera House, uh, this is for a maintenance agreement for an accounting system in the amount of $940.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Expo Center, Voice Systems Again. This is a maintenance agreement for our accounting system that we use at the Expo Center, and I think that, does that include, it probably includes the cash registers and all that too, I'm sure, probably?
I don't.
Or is it just the accounting piece?
I think it's just the accounting.
Just the accounting piece?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for Voice Systems. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, uh, we've had an Expo Emergency Operations Plan that has been submitted. I know Lance Bella has assisted Expo Center in putting that together, uh, and I think we've even asked, uh, if the Fair Board could, uh, be involved in some of this operations planning and test, uh, planning and, uh, working out, so, because for 10 days a year, the Fair Board has that ground, so we wanna make sure that they're, uh, been trained and, and, and all this as well too, so that's what that's for. And by the way, this operations plan is, 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 is been in existence, this is just we've, we've upgraded it and updated it.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Laurie. Um, Don Wellsen, IT. Uh, first up, this is for NITCO, and this is a contract to purchase 100 new telephones, telephone numbers in the amount of $50,4995 a month.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have Adams Remco. We're back in the copier purchasing business. Um, this is for the Prosecutor's Office in the amount of $11,105.
Can we do their maintenance agreement at the same time?
Can. So we're gonna do three and four at the same time, which is a copier, uh, three-year ma- copier maintenance agreement for the proper Prosecutor's Office as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries.
You can do four and five together.
Uh, motion to approve copier purchase agreement for the HR Office in the amount of $6,195, along with the three-year copier maintenance agreement for the same office.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, NITCO. This is a service agreement to provide a fiber line between 157 Franklin and the Porter County Jail in the amount of $1,289.95 a month. And I just wanna point out, I feel like I'm the teacher, but, um, over the last three years, we have spent some pretty good money up here, uh, creating an IT loop for all of our buildings, and I think this is the last piece, is it not?
I think this loops in everything out on 49 that we have.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do as a county is we wanna have redundancy in our inner, in our, uh, in our internet capabilities to where, uh, we can go, you know, if, if there is a problem, we can reroute. There's just a lot of, uh, it's, it's the right way to go, it's the right way to do it, and, uh, this is, this is more of that, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for NITCO. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. MCI, Provide Communications Cabling for Building B at the North County Annex in the amount of $6,841.
Motion to approve.
Second. Uh, we have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is Video Tech. This is a quote to install reception door release buttons on first, second, third, and fourth floors at the 157 Franklin Building in the amount of $2,543.72.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Buildings Facilities, Ray Cloyde. Uh, this is a Gertson Water Management Company DBA Utility Services Agreement to provide sewage screening at the jail in the amount of $400 a month.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. And then, uh, last, uh, for Ray's Department is Homewood Disposal Service. This is a service agreement to the Riley Animal Shelter with trash and recycle pickup at a rate of $288 per month for one year.
So, uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, Development Stormwater Management, Bob Thompson and Michael Novatny. And, uh, first up, we have an INDOT supplemental agreement for Bridge 62. This is 625 West over the Kankakee River.
Good morning. This is essentially a renewal of our, um, INDOT agreement that we have for federal funding for Bridge 62. Um, as you know from the emails, the bridge was let, um, beginning of March, and it was $1 million over the engineer's estimate, so I contacted INDOT to say please reject. INDOT was gonna reject because of that size anyway. So we're in the process of, we're gonna have a conference call on this, just to update you on this, uh, soon with the engineer and INDOT to try to figure out, um, what change we have to make to our plans. The rule is, is we have to make a substantial change to the plans, and then we can get it back onto a September letting schedule. They're carrying over the federal funding over for us on that. And as INDOT Project Manager Saturn told me, he says, uh, substantial change is rather subjective, so.
Just how did, how did this, how did they miss the quote by so much? My word.
Eight?
The engineer's estimate. I'm sorry.
Good question. It is excellent. Um, we were speaking with, uh, our consultant, United Consulting, John Klotfelter.
Yeah, for the bridge program?
And he, yes. He told us that 50% of the bids either, um, were way over the estimate or did not receive any bids at all on those. 50% that were let that week. Um, so, in this particular case, United had a bridge in Indianapolis that was, uh, sort of historical and everything, they thought they were gonna get, they got absolutely no bidders on it. And everything I've been hearing, and what Mike has been hearing too, is there's just so much work out there that contractors are picking and choosing, and they're going high. So we just hope that come September, that, um, we can, uh, work it so that way, the contract would be actually written and maybe sent in like November or something like this after they do a September letting, and it would be a winter-type project, and, you know, hopefully we'll get lower bids.
Yeah.
Uh, INDOT Project Manager was just shaking his head, and he goes, "I had a project just like this over in Lepore County last year, half the price." So.
And, and we're, we're unable to really examine the bits further, they didn't, they don't, won't give us the unit price, uh, breakdown, but they did share some information with us?
They did.
That shows that it's not one particular line item, so it kinda supports what Bob's saying, it's just sort of across the board through this latest letting, or the latest lettings that INDOT's had, that, uh, bid prices are coming in significantly, and quite significantly higher than engineer's estimates, so.
All right. We'll get it worked out.
Do we need to approve this agreement?
Yeah, it's supplemental.
This is, takes us out?
This is, yeah, I mean, it's?
Takes us out to that date of October, November he was talking about.
It's a continuation, the current agreement is about to expire.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second for an INDOT supplemental agreement for Bridge 62. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, a unified development ordinance with regards to solar energy systems. This is a first reading, so fill us in.
All right, um, this was heard at the Plan Commission at their February meeting. It was a public hearing. We did not have anybody, um, speak on this at that meeting. Um, the Plan Commission forwarded to you with recommendation of approval by an eight-zero vote on that. What this does is it breaks down standards for somebody that would want to have a, what is referred to as an accessory solar system, um, somebody out in the anticoated area that has five acres and wants to put in some solar to assist with their electricity on that. Um, it has regulations for how they can go about where to set it, the size, and everything on that. And then it gets into the principal systems, the very large solar farms on that, um, and all of the, uh, regulations that we are looking at to put on them for them to go forward within the, the county on that. One of the things I wanna note out there, worked with Mike on that, and that is with the water quality aspect on it, if you look at the appendix on it, there is a lot of